We have Ben on the line, the meetings recorded. Who wants to go first? Anyone want to bring anything to anyone's attention? Jeff, do you want to bring anything up? Maximus is our first order.
Yeah, why don't we just go through that one?
I've looked this over, although I'm missing Exhibit A.
So this is related to domestic relations, right?
This is the full agreement.
And this is for Maximus to basically do some accounting and coordination with domestic relations and other areas of the government to basically consult in order to find savings and then also account, do accounting for them. Just because this was something that was brought up in an audit of domestic relations. They had their, whatever it was, 10-year audit this year. And the state was basically, had a couple of things that they wanted them to change, but one of them was that they wanted them to utilize Maximus in order to basically see how they're billing for everything, how they're recouping their funds, and how they interact with all the other agencies of the government. Because there's a lot of things that they do that's integrated, and as a result, they're missing capturing dollars that they could be accruing from different parts of the government as a result of the work that they do. This organization is the recommended organization by the state, which is curious to me.
Well, my reason for asking for Exhibit A, which I was missing, is because it gives the definition and description of their service, and it says, "Development of the Central Services Cost Allocation Plan identifies the various costs incurred by the client," which is Warren County, "to support edited, administered federal and state programs. Plans will contain a determination of an allowable cost of providing each supporting service such as purchasing, legal counsel, dispersment, processing, etc. The plans will be based upon the client's actual fiscal and statistical data for the calendar years 2016, and the agreement that we're looking at here can be extended to include calendar year 2017 and/or 2018." So that's, that's the skinny end of what they do. And this, the agreement would be at a dollar figure of $7,500 for their consultation and services.
Yeah, I think that's the thing that I had a question about was that I was under the impression that some portion of that could be reimbursed by the state, that we would get state funding for it. But I don't, I don't know that we ever got clarity on that. Because if it's, if it's a situation where the state will pay for it, then I'll happily sign. If we have to pay for it, then, but I mean, even then, I think that they're kind of requiring domestic relations to have it, so then there would be a conversation about how we, how we would accommodate that.
Yeah, I don't see anywhere in here that it's.
It's too bad we didn't, we could ask Judy to come down and talk about it, because she's kind of coordinating all situations.
Well, this is something that we can talk to Judy and get a little more details before we bring this up at our, our meeting.
Ben, are you still alive?
Yeah, I can't say more than a few words without coughing, but yeah. I mean, the Maximus, the Maximus thing sounded like it was gonna, at least for the first couple of years, save us money, because it's likely to identify things that we're not allocating.
Probably, yeah.
Do you know if it's reimbursed by the state, Judy?
I do not believe it is reimbursed by the state. But again, the idea would be that they'll identify things that we are not currently getting reimbursed by the state.
Right, and I guess, yeah, why would they reimburse us when they're making it a requirement that we do this? So, yeah, makes sense. All right, I don't have any further questions, and any that I have, I guess I'll ask Judy or Judy or Judy.
When I spoke with Judy, we were talking about some 911 funding, that was one of the things, she spoke on this program, because we do, 911, we do on a call for probation and all of them, that, you know, we're not showing that as a cost to that department, you know, on that type of, showing that, you know, if hopefully now their own 911 funding increases, we can show that, you know, part of Ryan Bowles' wages for doing 911 addressing, we can charge it back to 911. It's not something that we can do right at the time, because we don't, we're not fully funded under 911, hopefully in the future maybe legislation changes a little bit. I know that was one of the things with that program that'll show that.
Okay, thanks, Todd.
I was trying to move out of one person here and onto the others, so.
So I'll go down the list of my stuff. The advertisement for the engineer was placed in the paper. Currently on the website have a, have a big link at the top of the page that goes to the RFP or the RFQ for engineering services. That's gonna run for a couple of weeks, and then we will have, at a work session, we'll open the documents related to the engineer, and then, you know, review that and then pick somebody. And then, as soon as that happens, we'll start moving a bit faster on some of the other maintenance and capital projects within the courthouse. Let's see, I'll just go down to the recycling bit. We took a trip, Ben, Kathleen, Dan Glocks, myself, and Heather.
Will Glocks.
Thank you, from the Conservation District, took a trip down to Elk County to visit their recycling center, and was very impressed with it. Their setup is a little bit different than ours, because they have the center, and because they, because of some of the things, the setup of the county is a little bit different with how everything's situated. But essentially, they purchased an old factory that was, that made wood, didn't they make like wood pellets or something, Ben? Like, they were chipping wood there.
Something like that.
Something like that. Anyway, it was this big warehouse, exactly like our warehouse, they had it divided up. The equipment that they had, most of it was purchased through grant funding, and I have to check my notes, but what grant it was. 902 grant funding. And something's being done with the 902 grant funding, where that whole program's being relaunched or redone, so it's hard to say how that'll exist going forward. But I know there's a lot of push to, to update it and to provide more opportunities there. They did, they did a lot of different stuff. The only thing they didn't deal with really was glass, but they did plastics, cardboard, aluminum, batteries, paint, hazardous household materials, everything. And it was very well-run facility, it was very clean, everything was very organized. They were nice enough to provide us with all of their budget information for the past couple of years, so that we could see how the numbers shake out as far as like what money they get from the recycling, what their expenses are, how their system's set up. They, their system revolved a lot around volunteer labor. They had two full-timers and a part-timer, I believe. But it was incredibly efficient setup. I took a bunch of pictures of the place. It's my intention to take a trip down there and actually work at the facility for a day in order to get a clearer picture of how they work, how the assembly line works. The day that we went, they were, it was, they weren't officially open, so they were just giving us a tour of all of the facilities and stuff, they didn't have the workers there utilizing the facility. But they're, they're pretty much solvent, their startup costs were the core costs of the facility. And like I said, a good chunk of those, all of the capital investments were made through grant funds. So we're still trying to get more information from Elk County as to what their startup costs were, how they went after it. They had, they gave us, they were nice enough to give us a view of, they kept clippings, newspaper clippings for the entire process of building the facility. I hope to get kind of scanned versions of all that, to go through that as well. But I saw a lot of opportunities as far as things that Warren County could do that they aren't doing, partially because of the placement of the facility in Elk County. Ours is, ours would be better, better placed, and there's a lot more opportunities for getting other, I think, organizations and other work solutions in there in order to mitigate costs of operation. So really productive trip, a lot of really good information, really looking forward to continuing to work with Dan Glocks and our, and our consultant and a number of other organizations to try to kind of keep moving forward on this, this kind of vision for recycling, and to then to get finished this solid waste plan as well. As far as the internship program goes, I think I recorded on that last week, that I had met with several department heads to put that program together. Ben conducted an interview this past week with somebody interested in interning with the county, which I didn't, I met the person, I wasn't able to attend the meeting because I was pretty ill at the time, didn't want to, wasn't 100%, but that's something that we want to move forward on pretty quick. But I think that's it for me, I'll, I will cede my time.
How did they fund the recycling center? How do they keep it? What are their financial situation? Like, do they bill the taxpayer to keep this running, or what do they do?
They, they're basically solvent through the recycling itself. So some portion of the materials pulled in a lot of money, some portion of them are huge drains on the system. And so their volume, in the span of a few years, had, had expanded pretty quickly. I mean, they, their, the amounts that they were recycling was just increasing every year over the past few years. They just moved to a new facility, so their ability to take more and different kinds of materials in was, was, was what allowed them to kind of like increase their volume. The other thing that's important to remember is they take, they have agreements with all of their, with all the municipalities that do recycling, and the municipalities bring the recycling to their center, and then it's pulled from the center, rather than each municipality having their own individual contract with a, with an agency. So as a result, their volume is pretty massive, so they can work better deals with individual org, organizations to, to pull funds from, or to get funds out of the recycling. I think that we, I wanted to get, one of the things I want to get are the numbers from the county itself, to, you know, to know definitively where their cost allocations are. I'm assuming that the salaries of the two full-timers that they have there are funded through the county, or that that's not, you know, because if everybody, everybody sits down and says, "Oh, we're solvent," or "We're break even," but I think that the way, their wages were, were funded by the county through the.
You looked at their budget, Jeff. It was pretty much awash when it came to the physical location, and I believe the part-timers, but that was the only wage that was on there. The Conservation District, I believe, was the, funded half of the salaries of the full-timers, and the county funded the other half of the full-timers. So you're right to say that it was solvent, not including the full-time employees.
Yeah. And so the, I think the thing, there's a lot of things to kind of evaluate with it, whether it be, you know, the cost of the individuals, what, you know, working with municipalities to see what the best scenario is to, to function so that they save money, you know? And I think that the goal would be to have a facility, if we were gonna do it, that would break as even as you possibly could, or get, you know, have as, as little cost as possible and still operate. I was really surprised with the amount of money that they pulled in for the recycling. I mean, I know that the recycling market's taken a huge hit because of the low cost of oil and the low cost of, you know, all, in plastic.
Steel.
Yeah. And metal, you know, the, the tanking of the steel market and everything else has made recycling very, not, not pulling the money that it used to. But they still pulled in quite a bit, I was really surprised. So that'll be part of the consideration, I would think.
Okay. All right, go ahead, Ben.
I don't really want to talk much. I think I'll just say, reminder everyone that we're speaking on the 17th at 7:30 for the Hyatts event at the Conawongo Club. And then the other thing is that the governor, I'm not sure if you saw it, because I think it happened while we were in our last meeting, but the governor just announced us in a disaster state of emergency in preparation for the coming storm. Todd, do you know what, does that mean anything to Warren County?
Not really, Ben. That was one of the things I was just gonna kind of bring up, that they're showing up the chances, or the greatest chance that we're gonna get is probably about 11 inches of snow, the National Weather Services. You know, it's about a 90% chance of at least two inches of snow, and it's a 10% chance of having greater than a foot of snow. But they're looking at, it's about a, they're estimating us about 11 inches. But they're also, it's a 90% chance of gonna get 12 inches of snow in Harrisburg and Lancaster, and that's a disaster for them. They're not, they're not prepared for that kind of, you know, they're preparing for it now, but, so, that's gonna put that part of the state in a disaster, where, you know, western side, you know, 11 inches of snow is, is just a snowfall that we get sometimes.
Right, that's no big deal to us, but I think, at least what I was reading in one article, was that they'll actually be taking resources from this side of the state and reallocating them to the eastern side of the state, at least for a period of time.
Yes, yes, some state equipment will get moved, but we haven't.
But not like our regional assets?
No, no, nothing like that.
Okay, very good.
All right, I'll open it up to our employees. Ed, do you have anything?
I was requested to be at that breakfast dinner that you're having Friday, so I will be there.
Todd?
The only thing I have is, I thought, and I think I don't amputate the packet, the intergovernmental corporate agreement of, you know, I just want to make sure there wasn't any corrections, expand for the agenda for your meeting before Wednesday.
Okay.
It really also is still just changing the name of it from, from the telecommunications project to the texted back on one side. It's really, they did have Don Tree look at it, saw no issues with it. I know both Elk and Jefferson County solicitors have looked at it, and it's, it's just gonna save us money.
Okay.
The only other thing that I have is, is part of this, our regional CAD project, the 10 counties has gone out for an RFP.
Okay.
So I would ask the commissioners, do not talk to Logisys, New World, or Sundard. Those are the three that are expressing enormous amount of interest, so now they're out for RFP. I know you guys have been looking at some other, looking at New World for a whole package thingy, so if you do speak with them, you know, I'm trying from saying that, hey, since we're maybe getting the CAD, you should give us a better price, because that's, you know, like I said, they're off. It's gone out, they went out for RFP Thursday, so it's out.
Okay.
Short turnaround. I know that they are, the vendor walkthrough is, starts next Monday, because they gotta go, they gotta see all 10 counties, so it starts next Monday. I think ours is on Tuesday, so, or starts Tuesday, starts Tuesday, it goes to Wednesday, Thursday, so, that's all I have.
Phil?
I was just curious on the, what, the ad in the paper for the engineer? There was a huge, now is that mandatory, and everything has to be listed in that text, or can you provide the link in that posting in the paper or the website? Or do you have to have it word by word in that?
I didn't think it was that big.
It has a link, it had a link in it.
Yeah.
For the website. I mean, the actual RFP is like.
I just breathed it into my throat, I thought it was a huge thing, I thought that was it, it'd be done.
I thought that's what we had talked about, that we would have, you know, the link and maybe just refer to it.
It did.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know, I didn't seem to.
I thought maybe it was that huge one, that quarter, quarter of the papers. Oh, sorry, here's the, here's the.
Well, we have a guest here.
Hi.
Hi, Dan.
How are you today?
I'm doing well, how are you?
Good, thanks, Mr. Emerson. If I could just address with you folks just for a moment, about redevelopment and tourism and all those things that are in that package. The other night, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, I sat to a meeting that the city hosted, and about halfway through it, I went, "Oh my God, deja vu." And deja vu it was. What was happening in that particular roundtable, or whatever you wanna call it, which was one of many, was the same thing that happened 12 years ago, under Mr. Don T. Ione. And, and the deja vu part came, in that the same things were being discussed, the same responses from the participants, and it was just like, wow. The city could have saved themselves a lot of money and come and had you guys make them a copy of this report. And that's not totally fair to say, because perhaps he's, the new consulting firm's looking mainly in the downtown area, and he might come up with some different thoughts. But the interesting thing about this report was, it was basically put in the trash can the evening it was presented. And not too many people have looked at it or read it recently. In fact, I just spoke to someone on the hallway who should be looking at this, and he said, "Well, he briefed through it a few years ago," and then put it back on his shelf and stuff. And I just, I find that a real conundrum as to why that would happen. And I've briefed back through the report a couple of times, and there are certainly some things in here that we could be aiming for and doing, and yet we continually try to reinvent the wheel. And in that same regard was the branding that came up, and the video that was presented there were videos. And had we, anyone that paid attention closely, one of the things the gentleman spoke about was that you need to have something of, of numbers in order to brand. And that means if you, you know, if you want to be the antique capital of northwest Pennsylvania, then we need to 10 or 12 antique stores, or what have you. And so in seeing that very first step in branding, I thought, "Well, we're not quite ready for primetime." And that evening, that very evening, someone wanted to have a consensus right then and there. Well, let's have a consensus on what we're gonna brand, brand our county to be. And I looked around the room, and I realized that we're a lot of important people missing from the conversation, and one of them was Jim Decker, whom I, I spoke with afterwards. And the reason he stepped away from it was because he had the same belief that I did, that we weren't quite ready for primetime when it came to branding, and we could brand all we want, but at the end of the day, it's not gonna get us anywhere. And again, if we go back to this report, it does address a little bit of that, of, and things that we could be doing. It identifies our strengths and our weaknesses, and some of the things we could be doing to get ourselves to a point that we would have something to brand. But instead, this $10,000 report, which the county paid for, ended up in the, in the trash can, basically. And in that back of the branding thing, because I'm very realistic, I'm very grounded in all these things, in all the things that I do, I get branded as being negative. And so then I get ostracized from the group, because I want everything to be something that we can actually work from and grow from. And I see in my 15, or 12 or 15 years back home, that we constantly ignore the advice of experienced professionals, as if we somehow know better, and it always plays itself out over and over and over. And I just don't understand, how do we expect to get anywhere if, if, we're basically right where we were 12 years ago? And it's just a puzzle to me that, that, that we keep going around in circles, and we want to keep reinventing it, and yet we don't want to go back and look what, what was said 12 years ago. I don't know how we bring all that to an end. I, you know, I speak with Jim Decker, you know, I have unusual relationships with a lot of people in this community. I'm not afraid to tell Jim Decker exactly how I feel about things, and yet go back to him and speak with him, with all the respect that he deserves as our lead, one of our lead agencies in this town. And I think Jim, Jim has, has a lot to do with, or his organization has a lot to do with being able to drive some of this forward. But how do we pull everyone together and all aim for one thing? And that's the other thing that the Don T. Ione report pointed out, was we have too many people trying to stick a feather in their cap, trying to do stuff on their own, and it's getting us nowhere when we needed one, what he, I think, described as a czar. And that's what I think, a push from Mr. Hannes Buttons, was that czar was not going to be the WCCBI, or recommended to be the WCCBI, based on the input he got from those roundtables. But to me, everything that we do, we just keep going around and around in circles, and I'm uncertain what the city is up to, will bring them right back to zero again too, after spending another $10,000. And I don't, I don't point a finger at anybody or any group, it's just something that's happening here in Warren County. And someone needs to step up to the plate here and drive this thing forward, where we're all working together in one direction. And I don't see that happening.
So just as a quick response, I have that report, I read that report, and you're, I would agree with the general contents of your point, which is like, you know, I'm a firm believer in not reinventing the wheel, or doing the same thing over and over again, and expecting a different result. As has been stated in this meeting previously, I'm in the process of putting together a marketing branding strategy group that would work basically in conjunction or underneath the commissioner's office, that would work on strategizing how to better market for tourism business, you know, the whole nine yards, Warren County. I'm not a firm believer in branding per se, but I'm committed to taking a different angle on it. The idea of the group would be to have a group of people that are leaders in the community, that are decision-makers, that have a great deal of influence, that aren't fly-by-nighters or hobbyists, that will, you know, take all of the various studies that have been done previously in their own experience, and utilize that in order to, you know, draft several projects that can be done that are, that will provide an immediate impact to the county. So the idea being, and then be able to coordinate with the municipalities, coordinate with the county, coordinate with all the various governmental agencies in order to move those plans forward. It would be the group's responsibility to determine what those projects are, to prioritize them, to function somewhat autonomously through the commissioner's office, and, you know, and then be responsible to kind of move those forward. Over the past few months, I've had meetings with a number of different people in the community in order to put that group together. We currently have the group. I'd probably like to have one more person, but right now it's at six, and June Decker is one of them. So the, that's probably gonna get started up within the next month, I would think, as I coordinate with them and we put together what the parameters of the group are gonna be. So, because basically I want them to have some authority, some gravity, you know, to function, and at the same time be able to, you know, work collaboratively with each other. each other and the, the community. I don't think that you can have a czar, just because, uh, I don't, I think that the task that you're trying to undertake is too big for one person or one office. It has to be a, um, a collaborative effort, you know, and, and, uh, I, I just think that what happens with a lot of these things, and I, I'd assume that you'd agree with me, is that, um, you do get too many hands in the cookie jar, and it makes it really difficult. You know, you have a lot of entrenched interests, people that have siloed interests, things that they don't, you know, that they're afraid the funding's gonna go away, or, you know, resources are gonna be shifted, and we've got to sidestep that somehow in order to, you know, attack the problem, which is a lo, a lack of coordination, countywide when it comes to, I mean, and, and you can't blame any one person, because we're not a tourist community. I mean, this is an industrially developed community based on a history of industrialization, whether it's oil, timber, you know, manufacturing, you know, the whole nine yards. So, turning them overnight into like the tourist capital, even though we've got a dam, the national forest, and a bunch of, you know, locales, I mean, it's not gonna be an easy thing to do. There's a lot of people that don't want people here. I mean, you know, all that has to be evaluated as a part of that process. My, my personal goal is just to get a group together that's small enough and smart enough to kind of sidestep some of those landlines that, that we run into over and over again.
I, I think you're right on point, Jeff, with a lot of that. I, I, I hope that-
Thank you, Ben.
Yeah, I, I hope that, I hope that we're not, not, not-
I like that. You should come to work our meeting.
Right. That's the only thought that maybe you're gonna get.
I know that. I'm, I'm sucking it up. I'm just, I'm savoring it.
I always throw one out at Jeff. I've known Jeff longer than, than just about anyone in the county here, so. But yeah, Jeff, I mean, I, I applaud, you know, what you wanna do. I cer, I certainly hope that we're not finding ourselves right back where we are again by simply creating another group, and, and, uh, I, I don't know how much of that was covered in, in, in this report. I, I'd have to go back and look at it specifically for that. But again, you hit on some of those things, is that we have too many, uh, people trying to do, to do good, and, and, and it ends up doing nothing, and, and, and how, how we, how we, uh, put all that together so we're going in one direction. And, and I think the other thing too, is that, that there is no magic bullet here. That Warren, I, I love my town, I love my county, I came back home because I love it so much, but we're, we're not gonna overnight turn into something. It's just not gonna happen here. And so, perhaps, we need to lower our expectations to some degree. But what I see is the little bit we can be doing, uh, well, one of them was, was just events, Jeff, and, and this gentleman spoke that we need to develop events. Take a look at how many events we've lost over the last few years, due to groups falling apart, or lack of, you know, whatever it was that, that, that happened. How about Ribfest? That was one of the first things I saw, Jeff, when I came home, out on the street of Warren, Pennsylvania Avenue out there. And I, I looked at that, and I went, oh my God, this is beautiful. That, that they're doing the right thing, that this is what we need more of here. It was well-attended, and then, of course, the excuse to move it out of downtown was because, uh, downtown was going to, uh, have that streetscape project.
Well, but Dan, you own a flower shop, you don't own a eatery. There are a lot of people that didn't like that downtown because of the fact that it took away from food business. I mean, and I, I agree with you, I love the event, I love Ribfest, I love-
But Jeff, it's a matter of education. We've done these events in other big towns, but no one was out to these restaurants and taught, why aren't they out there participating? And you give them a low fee to do that at, or no fee at all, but if I were the owner of the plaza, instead of complaining about it, I'd be out there serving pie, because it's the best damn pie anywhere around. And, and that's what it takes, is go back, it's what I do constantly in my position as president of Main Street, is sitting down with, uh, business owners and educating them as to why these things are important. And, and let me tell you, Liberty Rocks was one of our most, uh, 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 what do we wanna say, most profitable events that we had downtown, if it didn't rain. And, and, uh, Liberty Rocks did nothing for my business. But what Liberty Rocks did was put a lot of money into the kitty to seed other, other events. Instead, as I go back, let me talk about Ribfest, please, is that we took it out of the downtown because of the, and then we had the excuse of now, uh, there's no infrastructure to bring it back downtown. So, it was, uh, falling apart in the, in the park, uh, in our beautiful park on the, uh, other side of town. And so, what did they do? They moved it out further, out to the, uh, uh, fairgrounds, and then it completely fell apart. And, and I just don't understand these decisions. And that was a pre, pre-mobil event prime, just beautiful, nothing wrong with it. And, and, I can't speak, uh, I can speak to the fact that it got so very difficult. And last year, we sidelined Liberty Rocks because of the street, and, uh, there was another event that we sidelined too. And I, so I know how difficult they are, and I, I tried to speak to Jim Decker about them, and, and in fact, I'm having many conversations with him right now, and I will continue to, uh, speak with him, uh, uh, in hopes of bringing back these events. And he also spoke about bringing Ribfest back downtown, and, uh, it, uh, has a different location. But the point of it is, Jeff, we just have, we're, we're getting nowhere. In fact, we're losing ground, and, and everyone, you can call me negative all you want to, but it doesn't help with what, what the truth is in these reports and everything else. And that's, that's, I'm, I'm a firm believer in order to get anywhere unless we're grounded in the facts. We're, we're just not gonna get anywhere.
I'm gonna be honest, Dan, I think that your compliment on me was very positive. I thought that was a very positive moment. I just want you to know that.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, something that's fallen back. I've got a report sitting out in my office.
Another one?
It was, it was broke, it was, it was Dr. Rice's, who, he was kinda the commissioner. Somehow I ended up with it, but he, um, it was written in the mid-sixties of all the same things.
See?
It's fifty years old, you know?
I'd love to see that.
It's, and it talks about, of this county not being able to work five high schools. And we still have five high schools fifty years later, and, and it's just, you know, that it, it talks about the tourism, the, we should be, we should be at six million visitors a year, six million visitors a year because of the Kynect. It's in the process of building, and, you know, that's just, it's huge. It shows the Four Winds that go out of Warren, to Titusville, and to Corey, and to Bradford. You know, the-
In this report?
A lot of it's the same thing.
Did anybody leave us all on that side? Or me?
Oh, listen, Richard.
In the, in the Menards room?
Yeah.
They don't, you guys-
It's just old, or I guess Sean Westies was in there.
Someone before you exposed your device to water.
Yeah.
Hold, hold, hold. I'd love to see that report, too. And, and the interesting thing is, in this report-
Thanks.
It breaks it down, he talks about the whole state of Pennsylvania and where we rank, and, and so on and so forth. And, and, uh, I, I just think that it's in, interesting to look at, and perhaps we should lower our, our expectations, and, and in the sense of, there's no magic bullet out there. We're not gonna turn this place overnight into some mega tourism. And, and, uh, one other one I wanna bring up, we, uh, he talks about the conference center, which was, you know, uh, to be in Warren, and, uh, how, uh, the consultant at that time, another consultant, not, had said that we weren't ready for primetime for a conference center, which is true. I've been the conference center business all my life, and Warren is not ready to have a conference center for many reasons. So, what did the city go and do? They went out and hired yet another consultant to give them a yes answer. And this was, uh, all part of the Gro Warren scandal. And, the thing it was, was they identified a grant out there to build the conference center with. But here, they were trying, I, I thought, to plug, you know, put a, a round bag into a square hole. We don't wanna force anything either, even if there was large grant money out there, because you can see projects all over the country where something was forced, and it really was never meant to be, and there it sits there deteriorating, and, and, and there's no money to put into it, and, and so on and so forth. So, there's a lot to discuss on all this, and, and, again, I always approach it with a very intelligent thought. People will say things to me, I go back home and think about it, and I think, well, you know, that's, you know, there's something to that. And, and so, the answers don't always come overnight either, and, uh, I'm hoping that the county, in pursuing, uh, uh, this in the future, will keep all those things in mind that I talked about, and, um, last but not least, before I go, I was distressed at last week's headline with the three county commissioners' picture. Uh, I have far too great of respect for all three of you. And again, I know Jeff, I hardly know Cindy here, and I only know Ben about a few times he's been in my store, uh, prior to the election, and, and I know Jeff very well. With all the political animosity in this country, I expect the three of you to work together, because I know you all to be intelligent, you all have something to contribute, and I would hope to never see that kind of thing in the newspaper again, because I just don't believe that this, it's where we wanna be, uh, with this county. I believe you three were elected on a mandate to replace, uh, 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 what we had before. And, and, one other point to that, it seems in all the years I've been a county commissioner, we've always played the one man out thing, that one commissioner has always been excluded and sidelined, and I believe that to be wholly unfair. And whether it was Mr. Edelson in the past, or Mr. Bauer, or whoever it was, I didn't like it one bit. All those gentlemen and ladies deserve full respect and to work together, and, and to have complete input into everything. And I'm hoping that, uh, that that's how, uh, how, how you, uh, continue in the future to be, uh, working together. And, uh, that was not meant to be a lecture, that comes from my heart. It, uh, it's, you, all three are excellent people, and I wish you well, and, uh, if I can ever add anything to any of this, I'd be happy to do so. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Dan.
Appreciate hearing you. All right, anything further? Guess we can adjourn the meeting. Are you still awake, Ben?
All right, bye.
All right, bye. I think you woke him up.
Oh, you woke him up. I think I have a vehicle scheduled for tomorrow. I'm still waiting on confirmation whether I have our meeting or not, 'cause I sent an email.
I'll see if it's in more email.
Yeah, 'cause I know Mark was supposed to come down from Erie tomorrow, and we canceled that.
Okay.
We haven't taken any, any chances.
Yeah, I, uh, I can't believe I haven't had a response yet. There's six people that are supposed to be meeting, and not one of them has responded.
And you're going where?
Oil City. So, that's kinda right there on the edge of where-
Yeah, there-
Everything's supposed to be-
I mean, um, of course, I'm on, you know, I'm on Facebook, uh, Explore Vanango, or Vanango County Speaks, and it's all over about the winter weather.
Yep, so-
They would probably be better off to-
And I'm gonna wait a little bit, I, I'm pretty much decided I'm not going, but I wanna see-
Oh, come on, yeah.